Please pray for me and the rest of the board. And.
Pray for me, too.
Yeah.
You can pray for him.
I'll pray for all of them.
Okay.
Let us pray. The Lord, we come to you this afternoon being thankful, thanking you for this day, thanking you for all the things that you've done for us that we don't even realize. Thank you for our leadership in our country. Make sure that our country do the right thing, our leaders do the right thing for all people. Be with each board member and each member in here. Be with their family. Lead them, guide them. Let them do the right thing for your people. And for all this, we pray in your name, Christ Jesus. Amen.
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 All right. And as she walks up, Supervisor Jones will lead us into the. Thank you.
Attention, the lead pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. In two repose, but which is stated, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, we have minutes from April the fifth to approve. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. President. You have before you the April fifth board minutes. I would ask if there are no changes of any kind. The board please approve said minutes.
Are there any changes in the minutes? Can we get a motion for approval?
Make a motion.
Are there second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have now concerned citizens. Yes, sir.
Mr. Birchfield.
Okay.
Two on your list. Number two on your.
Number two, Mr. Michael Birchfield. Could you come forward, sir?
Good afternoon. Does me no good to be here other than trying to help the community.
Okay.
So that's what I'm here for.
What seems to be the problem with the Lone Pine community at this point?
Canadians, come inside.
The issues that I got or the allegations I've got is based through Lone Pine Baptist Church and Lone Pine Methodist Church. As Lone Pine Road also is connected to Barnes Road. So these, about two years ago, I'm gonna start out with some things that I've done some research on. I've been out there eight years. So I'm gonna kind of back up a little bit. There was a car wreck on top of this particular hill I'm talking about, speaking of. It's on Barnes Road just before you get to Lone Pine. Two girls were seriously injured. One of them was almost dead and make it. She was on bad hospitals for a long time. This road is still in this condition. And if you top this particular hill on Barnes Road, either you gotta top it in the middle of the road or be in the ditch or on the right-hand side of the road, your car will be tore up because the road's eating away because the roads hadn't been maintained. The next thing I was talking about just before we get there, which is a person that works for our State Department, which is Highway Patrol, went in front of his house on Barnes Road. It's between Lone Pine, foreign speaking, between Lone Pine and Pine Grove Road. There's a cover that's been out there two years, poorly maintained. I've got a lady that I took to the tire store three weeks ago in the rain because she busted a tire because the road done the damage. Got her back on the road. I've called Mr. Griffin about these roads six times, have had not a reply from Mr. Griffin. I'm not saying that he wasn't busy or had something to do that was more important. But I think as a person that votes, pays taxes, he needs to return some phone calls. So I've been there eight years. I've called off and on over the last three years.
Sorry, I didn't catch that. Try tapping above to edit.
I'm sorry about this. I apologize. I even took pictures of some of the places on the way out here. At the fire station on the end of Lone Pine Road, it got paved. We just passed the pavement. There's a hole in there right now. It's about foot and a half diameter. That would tear a car all to pieces if not cause a wreck. And I've analyzed the situation on the road in Lone Pine and Barnes. If an ambulance should or a police officer should have to be in any kind of pursuit of driving fast and meet anyone on this road and not aware of it would be damage to both people, vehicles and all. It's unsafe at Lone Pine. When you turn off Lone Pine off of Barnes, we're riding in the ditch. And I'm saying this mildly, in the ditch so we can't, because we can't go down the road because it tears up the cars. They come out every so often. They patch little bitty spots and leave some. And you go cross it in a car, a low-profile car. I got friends that has Corvets, different sorts of cars of low profile, which most cars are at this day, that won't come out there because the car is dragging the bottom of the asphalt. These allegations have been prayed for, spoke through the two churches. And I hope I haven't hurting your feelings, Mr. Griffin. We're just asking for your help as a community. Like, for instance, this is don't have anything to do with the road, but when the storm hit last year in July, I helped with my equipment, which I will help the state or county, either one, with my equipment in time and storm. But you never showed up. You did not come to your community in any shape, form, or fashion. And the community was really upset with you. And I think of you being a Christian man, seeing that you spoke as our flag, as praying a while ago, I think you need to stop, pray, and get yourself together in that part of the county. This is what I have to say, and I appreciate your time listening to me.
All right. I just want to address the last point first because it's the oldest, oldest point that the storm. If you didn't see me, you just missed me. But I'm pretty sure you saw my guys, my emergency management person, my road department. When you seeing them, you seeing part of Madison County. Because I can't go out and do anything for you and nothing but say I'm sorry. And I'm sorry that the storm did come through there. But I went out through that area three full time and stood around, looked at trees laying, laying down. I can pull back up on my phone now probably where the pictures that I took of the devastation. All right. Next one to Barnes Road. Probably every time someone down there texts me or emailed it to, email me about Barnes Road, I forwarded it to our road manager and Shirley Brown. But their situation is they can't do but so much with the budget that they have because there are no money budget for Barnes Road to get an overlay. But if it's a covered cross drain out there that you've been having a problem with, ain't no reason why they hadn't fixed that cross drain if it been in many years, you said, because what a time they cannot do much because it'll make the situations worse. So our road manager is sitting right back there. I'm pretty sure he can take care of that cross drain. And I talked to the Highway Patrol that's live out there. He called me. And I told him, we working on a road plan that was set last year or longer than that. And Barnes Road didn't have any money appropriated for it, for overlay that I was working, trying to get some money appropriated. And Lone Pine Road, I just found out, what, last of last week, that they paid the little portion of Lone Pine Road by the fire station. And when I heard that, I said, oh, well, we gonna have the rest of the Lone Pine folks down there. If you pay one portion and then pay the, the whole road. And here you are. But just to say on Lone Pine Road, it was a paved road way back before I came supervisor that area. And the loggers tore up the most of it. And as of right now, I'm hoping that we could maintain it better. But in the next year, I don't see in us being able to do nothing but what we've been doing is working Lone Pine as a dirt road. Because if you don't drive down it, it's named Lone Pine for a reason. Lot of tall, long trees. And I'd be willing to bet you, we fix this summer, somebody gonna cut logs in there the next summer and go destroy the road right out. But just, I know y'all concerned. I'm gonna do my best to get something on Barnes Road along with the help of my colleagues. Barnes Road, if y'all don't know, is a long road, very long. Pine Grove is a long road, not pine grove.
Lone Pine.
Lone Pine, yeah. All them pines and them.
Yep, they get confused.
And it named Pine for a reason.
It's a lot of pine trees.
Lot of pine trees, lot of laws. But your requests and prayers hasn't been, hasn't gone in vain. It's been heard, but it just hasn't been answered with dollars yet to fix Barnes Road. And I know you want to say something else. I'm gonna stop and let you say something else.
All right. Since you brought that up, and I appreciate that. A year and a half ago, you repaved all of Pine Grove Road.
Yes.
That didn't really need paved.
That's my opinion, isn't it?
Well, I understand that. I'm not accusing anybody of anything. But I've looked at the road situation out there, just like me and the commissioner has. And it takes about four years for y'all to get around to do something. I hope and pray it don't take this long. I'm looking at this as safety-wise. All these old people that go to these two churches out there, I'll say middle eighth of a mile to the church. Those are old people, have set incomes. And when their vehicles are broken, it takes out of their income, which they can't replace a lot of times. So I've tried to help and other people have, and will continue to do so. But anyway, I've sent my piece. I prayed for my situation and the church's situation. And I hope and pray it works through this.
The road manager wasn't in here when you said where that cover was. Tell us again where that cover is, so he can hear.
One more question. Somebody asked me, when's the date y'all gonna have the cover put in on Barnes Road?
Tim? Is that the one where the road, road is, y'all, y'all got the road closed?
Okay.
Right, right now, you saying Barnes Road is closed all the way? We can't borrow a track hoe? When it coming out of shop?
We hoping it'll be out around middle of this week. I'll tell the guy that he's in, he put one bush in here.
Okay. Now that other cover you talking about. Another cover on Barnes Road, sir?
It's only, two of them are, one of the natural traces been filled in seven times. They're still collapsing. And that's a new asphalt road that's coming off the.
On old natural trace?
On the old natural trace and the, ditches are under mining the road. And I've got pictures of trees and stuff being in the ditches which makes the water come into the road and undermine that. That had been done in, I know, over a year. Some of it has, some of it hasn't. And on the detour sign, you got your detour sign the wrong way at Lone Pine and Barnes. And everybody's going to the dead end cover thinking that's the detour, and that's going the wrong way. So it needs to be set so people won't be going to the cover that's out, so they'll be on the right route. And I took a picture of that this afternoon.
Is the cover you talking about, is it right there before you get to Sherman Road?
Oh, I believe so.
That, that you think might need cleaned out?
Well, I don't know it needs cleaning out. Like, if you try to stop there and somebody comes, you just hemmed up. So it's best just to go on up the road and not try to stop.
Tim, can you?
But if I could.
Can you get together and look and see what they, what he talking about there?
But if I could get with you or him, either one, and set a date, I believe you have my number. If you don't, I'd like to give it to you. Let's get a date, go look at the roads, and I'll show it to you where they're at. And I don't mind spending the time to go do that. I'm retired, and I'll help any way I can.
Who, who wanna meet up? You, Canadian, or Tim? All right. Get that young man right there, phone number, and schedule the meeting because he the one gonna be doing the work. He needs to know exactly where it's at.
I'll be happy to help him and direct him any way I can.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks for coming. Okay.
Canadian, get his number before you leave now.
I think next we have another concerned citizen. Come to the podium and just give him your name and address.
Frederick Thompson, 113 Davis Avenue.
Okay. Davis.
Davis.
Okay. I think, Mr. Thompson, you presented us with a petition for speed tables on Davis Avenue. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I was out there. If, if the petition is in order, Mike, have you looked at it?
I think it. Looked at it when I came in the room.
Okay. If, if it's in order, I'm definitely is in support of letting the road manager put speed bumps out there.
I think.
All the time, when I've been coming out there, I'll come Wayne Avenue, come to Davis Road, turn left and go back to.
King Ranch.
Go back to King Ranch Road.
Yes, sir.
But yesterday, I said, let me, I saw all them names on that petition for, for speed bumps. I said, them are the folk who live on, on Davis Road. Let me go down and make sure. So we're down there, and yeah, David, Davis Road longer than I thought it would. And I remember myself when I was a young man, that's the first street I want to hit that dead end. Started that dead end, juice it, and run it all the way out to King Ranch Road. So my motion is to authorize the road manager and engineer to put speed bumps on Davis Road.
Great. I'll second that motion. Can be, there's a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you very much. Where's Tim? Since Canadian's been in here. On King Ranch Road, at the corner of King Ranch and George Washington. That may be or may not be, or it may be dividing the city limits. But I've been wanting to see a four-way stop there for, for the longest. Can you work with us?
Motion is to put a four-way stop?
A four-way stop at King Ranch and, and, and George Washington there at the park. I'll make there's a motion, Paul, a few seconds. All in favor of the board supervisor putting a four-way stop there, show by sign about.
Are you gonna check with the city first to ensure that it's not in the city, or you know it's not in the city?
It is not in.
It's not.
It's in Brook, it's Brookville.
It's not entirely in the city. I don't think it's in the city at all. I've been talking to the city about it. I've been talking to other citizens of Ithaca about it. There's a speed problem there. The four-way stop will slow it down because those people, heck, they, they just trying to get, get back home right, right past the four-way stop. So they'll, they'll slow down going up to where the houses are.
Paul, do you wanna make a motion to acknowledge the?
Yeah, the petition.
The petition as well?
Yes.
And put that in the minutes, too?
Yeah.
I thought that was part of the original motion.
I didn't hear that, but it could be.
Hey, that kind of low.
Yeah, you, you down that end.
You got that, Mr. Lot?
You got that, Mr. Lot. Make that a part of the original motion. Petition was going, was him, we need to acknowledge.
Prize and acknowledge, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay. Moving right along on Monday evening. I have scheduled matters of business. Road project updates. Both of Road, Reunion Parkway Phase Three and Reunion Crossing Parkway.
Yes, sir. We have our three consultants here that are gonna discuss each of those projects. Just give the board an update on where we are on each. I believe the first group is gonna be MSEG discussing Reunion Two.
Thank you.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
We just want to give you all this. Mr. Bryant, just mentioned, want to give an update on Reunion Parkway Phase Two, which is the project that MSEG are the design engineers for. And I have with me Mr. Thomas Grass, who is our Transportation Discipline Manager and Engineer, who's over at Transportation Group in our office, who is also working on the design for this project. So since the last update that we gave to the board, which I believe was back in November of 2020, since then, the activities that we have completed as it relates to design have been completing the 60% complete bridge plans, construction plans. And that was one of our first milestones as it relates to the, the bridge plans, to submit those to MDOT's Bridge Division for their review, comment, and approval. And so we did submit those to MDOT back in November of 2020. So we're waiting on any comments that they may have related to those that plans submitted. Also, after that, one of the items that we were working on to support property acquisition was the development and completion of survey plaques and legal descriptions, which those were turned over to the county for use for that phase of the project. Those were turned over back on December 22nd, 2020. And so in discussions with Integral Realty Resources, Mr. Jim Turner, as we understand, all title work has been completed. And they've met with the property owners related to that effort and evaluation process for those properties have been completed, as we understand right now. One of our other milestones that we had to complete, again, was back dealing with MDOT, we submitted 90% complete bridge plans. And so we have not received any comments. We had not received any comments as related to our 60% complete submitted. So we didn't want to waste any time, so we proceeded with 90% plans. And so we've submitted those. We actually submitted those on April the 12th. Since then, we've actually had a conversation with Mr. Mitchell Young, who was the LPA Assistant Engineer for MDOT, who's been our point of contact, one of our point of contacts for this effort. And in discussions with him, he informed us so far, the Bridge Division, they are currently reviewing those plans. So far, so good. No, I won't say issues. No raised eyebrows of anything that they've reviewed so far, so that's a plus. So they're continuing with their review of those plans. He will be back in contact with us once that review is complete. And so as a part of that, in support of that submission, we have the roadway portion. And so we've, as of today, we've completed the design, 90% design for the roadway portion. And so we have merged those plans, the bridge and roadway plans. And so I'll need to get those to, to Tim and to MDOT for review. And so our next step will be to schedule an office review with MDOT. And so that'll be with Madison County, Tim, MDOT. And we probably will invite Integra also, just to formally review those plans and make sure that everything is in order as relates to any concerns that MDOT may have. And then just proceed with preparation for the bidding process. So that is basically, that is where we are. Those are the activities that we've completed to date. Any questions that the board may have for us at this time?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah. When do you expect to have the office review with MDOT?
Hopefully, we'll, I anticipate that we'll be able to reach out to them in the next couple of weeks to begin scheduling that. Typically, MDOT kind of facilitates their schedule. They use, I forget what system they use, but they'll facilitate that and send out invites, coordinate everyone's calendar. So right now, they're just waiting on us to inform them that we're ready to proceed with that next step.
And, and then, once that has been completed, then you come back for construction?
For bidding, advertising, bidding, and contracting. Yes, sir.
And, and we probably should expect that back sometimes in June?
I would say definitely June. Like I said, we still haven't got any official comments back from MDOT. So they asked, if I remember correctly, they asked for about a four-week period. So I think around June, August, between June and August. Yes, sir.
Okay. We should be able to go out for construction at that.
Again, advertising, yes.
This rough estimate.
Yes, sir.
Do you know, do you know next year?
Uh, this year.
This year?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And it usually would take what, about two months for?
Procurement process, two to three months.
Out for bids for construction.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yes, sir. Like I said, considering the time procurement process for advertising, pre, pre-submission meetings, so forth, about two-month time period.
And so actually, we should, by the year end, we should have the bids in and award the bid for construction of that project by year end then.
Yes, sir. I, I, we don't see any, any issue or concerns at this point that would prohibit us from, by the years end, as you mentioned, being able to have bids in hand.
Yeah. And I know that all this is just estimates that you've given me because a lot of it is out of your hands.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Well, so, okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
So you say you think we've got a construction beginning of next year?
Yes, sir.
And what about the right, how much right, how many different parcels that landlords have to deal with right away?
That, I, I actually don't have that with me at this time. Like I said, I've been communicating and discussing that with Mr. Jim Turner, so I'm not certain exactly how many property owners. Yeah. About 12, maybe. Rough estimate.
I guess your estimates are assuming that we don't have to go to court or anything like that, or is that kind of?
Absolutely. So the right-of-way process could potentially impact, you know, the remaining items to get us to construction. So that, that could possibly push the schedule back.
Good update.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Next person.
Next, we have a representative from Stan Tech who's just going to discuss the Reunion Three portion.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank y'all for giving us this opportunity to provide an update on the Reunion Phase Three project. To date, we have completed the environmental phase and held a field review, or are in the process of acquiring right-of-way for this project. We've acquired all but three parcels, and these parcels are currently in the end of the main process, working their way through that. We hope to have that resolved within the next two months, at which time we would look at holding the office review and moving these plans forward. We have acquired all the right-of-way for the intersection of Green Oak and 51 Improvements. You'll notice utilities are being relocated in that area. All goes well with that. We hope to have that portion under construction by the end of the year.
By year end?
By year end, yes, sir.
Under construction.
Hope to have that project under construction by the end of the year, barring any major issues with the. Barring any major issues with the utility, utility relocations.
And I, I know this may be a little early, but, um, uh, how long you think construction would, would be?
Uh, that part of that, that phase of the construction probably take a year and, and the process of us holding the office review, following up with the P S and E assembly. Hope to have ours under, have the remaining portion of it under construction, uh, next year. So they would kind of be under construction at the same time. One would go first, the second one would go.
And, and I know that, uh, in the past, you've given update to the supervisors that M DOT has taken over the signalization on Highway 51.
Correct, yes, sir. We've broken out that phase and finished those plans for M DOT. And due to some, just safety issues and other issues involved, felt like it was a better path for them to handle that aspect of the project.
And I think the date that was given for them to start on that signalization was in August of this year.
Yes, sir.
Is that currently still on schedule?
So I think it's, I think it's moved to September right now, the last time I saw. This is the date they were looking at letting that project would be in September, based on their.
M DOT.
Based on M DOT's data.
Yeah, M DOT has moved it.
I believe so. I believe that's correct.
Yeah, just keep us updated, because I know this is in Supervisor Jones' district, but it affects all of us just because being on Highway 51.
Yes, sir.
And, um, a lot of people are waiting on that signal light.
Much needed, for sure.
Yeah, so, uh, if you will, just keep us all updated. If M DOT decides to move it on, on out further, because then, you know, we, it, it may be time to sit down and talk with them.
Yes, sir.
Because we don't need to keep moving that, that little project out.
I think it says, I know utilities are going fairly smooth, I believe, but.
Right.
Hopefully that'll continue. I, I do have one other item I'd like to present as well for the board. I'd request the board approve a resolution, uh, in support of this project. Came up this afternoon, uh, looking at trying to secure some federal funding. This resolution basically states, states that the Madison County Board of Supervisors supports requesting a member-directed project in the amount of $4 million for the completion of the reunion phase three project. This is an important project for the growth and development of Madison County, and we wholeheartedly support federal funding for this project.
Thank you. I, I'm familiar with this, just because a lot of this has happened in the last two weeks. Because I know a lobbyist, a federal lobbyist, Bolesno, has been, uh, talking with our Congressman, uh, Michael Guess.
Yes, sir.
Uh, with the monies that is coming from Washington and, uh, and so, uh, hopefully, we can get, you know, $4 million for that, for that project. And so, uh, uh, Mr. President, I would make a motion for approval for this resolution.
Okay, all in favor?
Question?
Question?
So would you say you looking for, uh, money that coming down for the fell to be earmarked for that, uh, for that road?
Yes, sir. Which would help cover, cover the county's portion of what has been obligated for that project.
All right.
We got a second, don't we?
Yeah, that was a second. You all right now?
Yeah, I'm all right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And all opposed? Nobody opposed? So, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good update.
Thanks, Brian.
Was that a unanimous vote, Mr. President?
That was a unanimous vote, Mr. Chastrey clerk.
Last update we have this evening is for Bozeman Road, and I believe Stan Wright's here to deliver that from Neil Schaefer.
Okay.
I see we have improved on our easel since the last time we was here. Yeah, that must belong to Neil Schaefer.
He's a little strong.
Get that up just a little bit more, Stan.
Up, up.
As long as you point to where you're talking about, I figure out.
Never mind.
Well, as long as I, if.
I can, I can get you on a display. This is display. I can hand it out to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
How are you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Appreciate y'all's time. I've got Jonathan Kaiser here with me as well. All right, so I'm going to update you on Bozeman Road. Kind of want to review the scope of the work, what we're doing at this point. From 463 to reunion parkway is going to be a boulevard section with a multi-use trail. It's going to look basically like Highland Colony Parkway. We're also going to improve the intersection of Gluckstat and Catlet, um, starting basically at Beltair, and going roughly about 400 to 500 feet north on the Catlet. We'll be improving, uh, we'll be adding a turn, you know, we have one left-turn lane on Catlet right now. You'll have two, which will basically extremely improve the capacity. Right now, it's about 170 feet, and I think we'll have two 350-foot lanes. And then we'll also have two through lanes, so you'll have, be able to go, you'll have two lanes that can go southbound. So it, it should improve that intersection a good bit. And then we're also going to improve it to the east and west of, uh, of Bozeman, the Gluckstat intersection. Also, we're going to, because this project, to keep the, we have, you know, we have some federal funds, and the application claimed that we, we would improve capacity from one end to the other. So we had to do something intermediate of reunion and, uh, Gluckstat. So we're going to add a turn lane into Sharp Boulevard, which goes into Cherry Hill. That'll help, that'll show that we're improving capacity. And we're also going to realign the entrance, the entrance into Cedarmont and tie it into, uh, to Mansdale. Just take it away from, it's so close to Mansdale, and we'll just eliminate that conflict right there, and it'll be a safer entrance for that neighborhood. And we'll be able to use the old Mansdale Road, 463, what it was back before they realigned it. So we won't, we didn't have to buy the right-of-way and minimal construction costs to do that. And then the other component that we have to do to keep the federal funds is we had to keep, we have to build a 10-foot bike trail from 463 all the way to Gluckstat. So we're going to meet that. So where we are, um, and I, like I said, back in November, uh, the right-of-way has been very challenging under the circumstances over the last year plus. The good thing is, we were able to secure the funding. We were able to get an extension from the N P O. So the 4.4 million dollars is safe. There was a timeframe on that, but under the circumstances, the, uh, the other cities and counties of the, of the N P O voted unanimously for the county to be able to keep their funds. So that's good. 55 parcels, so that's a lot of parcels for, for a project this size. Right now, uh, we have three in condemnation. And y'all have voted on those, and I think you're aware of them. There's roughly 17 files that are open, so 17 parcels are still open. Of those 17, 12 have verbally agreed, so that's positive. We're moving in a positive direction. Still working on the other five. Hope we don't have to go to condemnation, but it is a possibility. I don't know if all of them will, but maybe a couple of them is, there's a possibility. Still, that's a really good percentage. And we've had M DOT involved in the right-of-way process to make sure we're going in the right direction, and they've been very pleased and been impressed with what our right-of-way team has been able to do. Let's see, you know, and, and just to let you know, we're just a few months away. We're getting really close. And it'll depend on the condemnations and how long that process takes. We got one that we're going into executive session tonight to discuss. Then the, the complex part comes, and that's the utility companies. And if anybody's driven down this road, you know how many utility companies are. The, the two biggest impact are AT&amp;T, and they have, and you actually approved an agreement, which is great, because it's moving forward. They have what's called a, an R T center. It's our R T site. It's like a remote terminal site. And that basically feeds everything in that area. So if you ever drive, and it's just right past Mansdale, you see those big metal boxes. That's what they are. Those, and that's a big undertaking, but they have been working really hard. They have plans, and they've gotten the necessary permits from the city of Madison, because some of theirs in the city of, the city right-of-way. So that's moving forward. It's probably going to take them, you know, February or so before they're complete. That's kind of the critical path, where we are. Entergy has over 50 poles that they're going to have to move. They're still in their design phase, but they're completing that. We've met with them virtually several times. We actually did get to have one recently have a, finally have a in, you know, face-to-face meeting with them. But they're moving as fast as they possibly can. So those are kind of the two critical paths. There's a lot of other utilities that are on their poles, and it depends on what they do. But we're still looking at about a year for those guys to be through, maybe a little less than a year for those guys to be through. So that's really about the time we can bid this project. And what we'll do to expedite it quickly is, instead of waiting until they're completely through to move on to that next phase, we're going to start the advertising and bidding phase. And so that way, once the day they're through, we're hopefully can put our contractor, who wins the little bid, out there as soon as possible.
And what are you planning on releasing the bid for construction?
Um, it, it just, I got to get these dates from the, from the utility companies. I would say we're probably going to advertise early part of next year, um, early part of next year. Is what our goal is. It just really depends on how, what, how long it's going to take some of the utilities. They're going to all have to bid their projects. It's, 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 you know, like I said, there's nine different ones. We've got Comcast, and we've got C Spire, and we've got Center Point, and Texas Eastern, and I can go on and on. But, um, everything's, you know, we're all moving forward, and we're getting plans. We're all having discussions and continuing to move it forward. The other thing that's really not going to be in the critical path, but it is something we have to take care of. We do have to get a four, we're going to do some 404 permitting. We've got some wetlands that we're going to have to mitigate. It's in the budget that we've always planned. But that is something that will be coming to y'all, probably in the next couple of board meetings, to, to move that forward and make sure that doesn't have any delays. Just some other things I want to talk about the project. You know, it's still around 24 and a half million total. I mean, a lot of that y'all have already spent, so it's not 24 and a half moving forward. And we, you know, we, we have 4.4 from the S T P funds. We secured that funding. And then, of course, I'm sure most of you are aware that the county got 5 million from the state pond.
Right.
So that, that's going to help. And I don't know if I saw a project that got more money than that. I may be wrong, but, um. So that's really about where we are. And I'll be happy to field any questions.
Yeah, just what Kelly wanted to go over, uh, just two or three things here. In phase one, which is phase you're talking about, talking about.
Yeah, we can call it phase one.
We're going to redo the intersection at Gluckstat and Bozeman, as you described.
Basically from Beltair up to north of Catlet.
Okay, we'll redo that intersection.
North of Gluckstat.
Also, the intersection at, uh, at reunion.
Yes, sir.
That intersection will be part of this phase one.
Yes, sir. And if, and if the, uh, the overpass project gets there first, you know, we've, we've, you know, talked to M S E G, we've, we're, we're making sure that we all, our plans are matching. And if it works out that that needs to be built in that phase, then, then we'll just let it be built in that phase.
And we have 17 more right-of-way, that's approximately 17 more, which 12 has agreed.
That's correct. Yes, sir. Verbally agree, which, I mean, it's a verbal agreement. It is what it is, but it's still positive.
Okay, and five that you're definitely working on. Project's $24 million, and this is in still in phase.
Twenty-four and a half. I just want to make sure we get that half in there.
I, I didn't quite understand.
I mean, it's, you know, no, it is, I mean, there, there's some unknowns, because there will be some more utility agreements, and we don't have those calls from them. We, we only have one from AT&amp;T. Theirs was, of the $1 million they requested that the county pay 300, which was better than what I was expecting, to be quite honest with you. Because their, um, that R T site was on a private easement, and I thought that was going to be a lot more expensive, so.
But what is the, and you mentioned Cherry Hills. What, what are you planning on?
Right now, all we're doing is putting in a turn lane.
Okay.
And that's just so we can meet our capacity improvement component of, of the application.
Okay. And what is the cost of the bike trail?
Uh, individually?
No, just, just the bike trail. What's the cost of the bike trail from 463 to Gluckstat?
Oh, separate, it's, it's a little complicated, because, you know, it's materials, but I would say it's probably three or so million, maybe.
Were you 3.7?
Three or so, three or three and a half million. I can't, I don't have a hard number on that, but I can be happy to get that.
You know, and, and the reason I ask that is because we got 4.4 from C M P D D. That's really to put the bike trail in.
At the end of the day, that's.
At the end of the day, you're just talking about the bike trail.
For the most part. 75% of it, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, and so, you know, you have some monies left over, but the county is actually moving forward and paying, along with the state, as you indicated, with 5 million.
That's correct.
As far as the road, phase one. And, and I know that, uh, phase two, uh, I don't know whether you're prepared to talk just a little bit about it.
Well, I guess, you know, we've always kind of, over the last few years, talked about if we, if the county ever wanted to build the project as a whole, you know, what was originally intended, and that was to make a boulevard section for the whole, so we could call the remaining work, I guess, phase two. You know, that would, I guess you want to look at it, the, the bike trail would already be built, so your right-of-way on the west side would already be bought, because that's, you know, you wouldn't have to go any further. That bike trail's the outer limits of that.
On the west side.
On the west side. I meant to say west, if I didn't. So you would have some right-of-way on the east side that you would have to buy. And you would, to do that, we still would need to design that. We haven't designed that portion of the project.
But, uh, you know, I think the board would definitely be interested in phase two of it, you know, just move traffic, and that's really the northern part of reunion. You know, the reunion interchange.
Yes, sir.
What kind of cost you looking at on, on the design for that, for?
Well, we've, you know, it's, it's always been, because when we originally set up this contract, we thought we might do the whole thing, and so I, I, I think we're probably looking, um, we wouldn't have to do a lot of survey. I, you know, I think we're looking at around a half a million dollars. We've talked about it once or twice. Yes, sir, give or take. I would have to get some specific budgets, if that's where y'all wanted to move forward, because there's some hydraulics that I'm not fully, you know, have budgets on or anything like that. But just, you know, it's always been about that, you know, I'm basing that off what we originally thought we were going to do, and then what we ended up doing on the scope, so.
Yeah, I'm definitely, you know, I would be wanting to definitely be, uh, willing to move forward with it. You know, I think, you know, listen to the other board members and see what their thoughts are on phase two as far as the design work, but.
You said the design works a half a million, or the right-of-way?
Yeah, be designed. The right-of-way would be another half a million or so. I, 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 you know, just, the, most of that right-of-way would be residential. So, you know, you wouldn't have any, I mean, I'm just thinking what's north of reunion to Beltair, and I think most of that's residential, from off the top of my head, so you wouldn't have any heavy commercial properties.
Can you bring us back more info next week?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I, I couldn't understand.
More info on it next week?
Yeah, I'll, I'll have.
About two weeks?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, the first Monday, if we can get the information on it. If we're talking, you're talking about from reunion to the Beltair entrance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it'd be that face. And, yeah, I'd like to see some solid numbers relative to some guesses right now. You, you would have more information on how much, uh, survey work you might need, if you need any.
Yes, sir.
And you'll, you'll have some idea of, of, uh, what the design would be. That portion, is it, is it still going to have, uh, the raised median in the middle?
For the most part, yes, sir. I mean, there might be some segments where we don't put a raised median and do it. You know, I, we would just have to look at it during the design phase. That's what, that's what the, as of right now, per the environmental document. That'd be another good thing about this I want to raise, is that the environmental document that was approved would cover this. So if you ever wanted to go get federal money to do this, you would be environmentally cleared. You would just have to update the environmental, just because it has an expiration date, which we're going to have to do anyway on this other phase. But if nothing really majorly changes, it's generally not a big deal. But it is something, it, but the good point is, is that all the wetland studies and everything, all the components that go into it have been studied, so that, that phase would. So that, that phase would, would, certain federal monies it would be eligible for, not anything that would go through the NPO, but there'd be other, I mean, earmark could potentially be utilized. It, because, just because the environmental was done for the whole project.
Right. Well, consider the work that's been done, how much time you think we could shave off the time? I mean, we've been working, when, when did we contract you guys to start on this?
Well, we started the environmental back in 2016 and that was a, you know, and then, I mean, I think we're, you know, we're a little bit, you know, the schedule's a little creeped up because of what we went through the last year or so, but we're in a rough estimate. We're about where we thought we would always be.
I mean, would it take you another four years to go to, uh, construction on Phase Two?
No, I, the only, the only, the tricky part would be that we would have to wait till Phase One was completed before we started construction on Phase Two. There'd have to be two separate contracts, but we would, um, you know, this one would be expedited a lot quicker because the environmental's already been done and, uh.
What are you estimating the construction? How much time is the construction going to take on Phase One?
Probably two years. So by the time the right of way was bought, I think this, the, this next phase could timeout where it hits kind of perfectly, to be quite honest with you.
Right. Do you want any motion or you just want to bring back information?
Whatever y'all want. I'll be, I'll be happy to bring back specific information if that's what you want.
Yeah.
I'm, I feel pretty good about those numbers. I mean, you know, we've, you know, it's, it's always something we kept up with, so, but I'll be happy to just, you know, sharpen that up and.
Yeah, bring us back the numbers, put it on the agenda, give it, uh, Shelton, get on the agenda for the first Monday.
Okay, I'd be happy to. Thank you, I appreciate that, I'll be happy to.
I liked that last time you made, you sharpened your pencil up a little.
Yeah, sharpen the pencil.
I will. I also, I also want to be, make sure we have everything covered. I want to protect y'all, make sure we don't surprise you later down the road, but I, we'll, we'll look at that and get back to you.
Yeah.
That it?
Thank you very much. And of course, we are interested in time if we, we'd like to be able to drive a finished product relative to discuss.
Absolutely, you know. I, you know, and, and I, I wish we could fit it into this one, but I think if we do that, we risk the 4.4 million because I don't think we could have that done in time. That money expires, you know, soon. So I don't know if it would, you know, you could risk losing that if we tried to not phase it, I guess would be the answer. But we'll, we'll be happy to, we'll get you those numbers. Thank you.
Okay, what do we got next? I believe we are down to the consent items. Is that correct?
Motion on the consent item.
Is that second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. It was unanimous. Chance for a clerk. It was unanimous.
Yes, sir, I felt that, I felt that.
You felt that?
I did.
Okay, uh, business items, uh, Mr. Ray Valentine, uh, Michael Baker International. There you is. Hey, Ray.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, looks better on paper.
Thank you, Ray.
It's on the computer.
Well, first let me thank you for giving us a few minutes and we, we won't take long. Got Richard Chisholm with me and I'll, uh, address his role in our company in just a moment. We just wanted to take a, a few minutes and I think, uh, most of you are probably somewhat at least familiar with Michael Baker. Uh, we've been in the Jackson metro area for over 75 years and we've been in Madison County in Ridgeland since 2009 and in fact, just renewed our lease for another five years. So we, we're here to stay. This is where we want to be. Uh, it, it's exciting to see the things that you're doing, uh, on behalf of the county and certainly it's a, a great testament to your leadership to hear the things that are going forward. And we just wanted to, uh, make you aware, uh, a little bit more, uh, and I'll leave the little, leave behind there is just really a quick summary. We have about 50 people in our Mississippi office. Forty of those are in, work out of our Ridgeland office. I've got a small office down in Ocean Springs with about 10 people and actually have about 20 people over in Mobile, but they're working on Alabama work and they don't really get involved with the Mississippi. So, so we, um, we are here local. Uh, we have done everything from back in the seventies and eighties, uh, managed the Alaskan Pipeline project out of the Jackson, uh, office back when we were down in, uh, Northview Drive, if you know where that is. Um, we have done quite a bit of work for MDOT through the years. Uh, we did the design of the Madison interchange, of the Split Diamond interchange, uh, down in Ridgeland. We, uh, did the Colony Park, uh, project down in, uh, down in Ridgeland. Uh, we worked with the city of Jackson in, uh, for the airport. We also, uh, did the, um, Canton Safe Routes to School project over at Nichols Middle School. And, uh, our services involve everything from survey, roadway design, bridge design, hydraulics, uh, traffic engineering, uh, G I T and construction oversight. And Richard, uh, some of you may know Richard, uh, I believe, he was Assistant Chief Engineer for our MDOT, uh, and headed up their construction services up until about a year and a half or two years ago. And, uh, he came on board with us. And, uh, we, we have done, um, some work with the city of Ridgeland recently on some pavement analysis and actually, uh, did the, uh, dam inspection up at Sulphur Springs. I think, Mr. Griffin, you met a couple of our folks, uh, when they were out doing some of the, uh, fieldwork reconnaissance. And, uh, so, uh, we appreciate Tim, uh, giving us that opportunity and bringing it, uh, to us. And we just want to, uh, uh, express our, uh, interest in the community. Uh, we're heavily involved with the Madison County Business League and Foundation. I think I've met most of you through it, uh, initially and with the, uh, Ridgeland Chamber of Commerce as well. So we appreciate, uh, just a minute to kind of reintroduce ourselves and, uh, thank you for the time. Any questions, be glad to.
Coming by, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming back.
Very impressive and it looked like you've done a lot here in Madison County, actually.
Uh, we, we have been fortunate, uh, to do a lot. And, uh, as I said, we, we choo, choose to be here and, uh, just, uh, if we can help in some way, uh, we would certainly welcome any opportunity.
Okay.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. We're going to make it, uh, slight deviation here, change, um, bring Mr. Joey Deason up and hold Tim, uh, back until after Mr. Deason's presentation to us.
Uh, Mr. President, Board, thank you very much. What you should have in front of you is an interlocal agreement between Madison County and the city of Ridgeland regarding the, um, Renaissance Phase Three B and Renaissance Phase Four. This is a 50, it's estimated to be a $55 million project. When completed, it would have about 425 jobs. Uh, back in November, you guys approved the TIF plan. What's in front of you today obviously is the interlocal agreement. Uh, Mike and I have both reviewed it, feel like it has adequate protections for the county and it's before you today, uh, for a motion and approval if the board so deems it.
Okay.
I've got a question real quick.
Go ahead.
Is it Phase Three B?
Yeah, thi- this excludes Costco.
Okay, so this document just says Phase Three. Should there be a B behind it?
I believe inside the actual interlocal agreement, it, it defines that, um, not as Three B, but it says Phase Three, but it does go into detail to, down to the exact parcel and excludes the Costco.
And it also, no more than 50%.
That is correct. The county is protected with regards to that. You'll be paying no more than 50% of the add valorem incremental increase on the site and that obviously will not be known until, uh, it hits the tax rolls.
Okay. Mr. President, I would make a motion for approval.
Is that, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Joey, for working on it.
Job well done.
All right, guys.
Okay, now we can bring back our own Mr. Tim Bryant.
First item I have is the, uh, request to approve the contract for the bids received for Stokes Road Bridge Rehabilitation Project. Little bidder was BP Construction in the amount of 152, 477, 53. Now, I asked that the board president be authorized to sign the contract.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next item I have is the request from the Natchez Trace to close Dave Miggin's Road. Dave Miggin's is not a road, it was never, well, in 1940, the board of supervisors agreed to maintain this road. And at this time, it is just trees down through there. You can't tell any difference in where it is or anything else except there's two tri- tire marks where a property owner's going through there.
Make a motion for approval.
Is that?
Yep, because I rode all down through the closing part of, of Natchez Trace and couldn't find it.
You have to know where it is.
Well, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Next item I have is change order one to the contract of AdCamp. This is to add Woods Road, Gray Hill Road and Mallard Point Circle to their contract. This will increase the contract by 46,198.50. 27,000 roughly of this will come from the monies received from the logger that tore up Woods and Gray Hill. And the remaining amount will come out.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I guess that was a five oh vote.
It was a five oh vote, I like it to me. I heard all five horses.
Yeah, okay.
Next item I have is a request for authorization to advertise for constructions for the stout road water supply well in support of the mega site.
Motion.
Wait a minute, I had two motions in one second. I don't know which you made, what, and the motions, the motions were simultaneously, but I'll, I'll, I'll yield the motion to Supervisor Jones.
Thank you.
And the second to Supervisor Banks. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item I have is a request for the board president to be able to sign a, uh, permit in order for us to do work on Highway 22 in support of the King Ranch Road Signal Project.
Motion. I'll second it.
I think I heard a motion.
Oh, I heard a motion coming from.
All made the motion and Mr. Carl made second.
Oh, well, that's, that's liberal of you. Yeah. Griffin and, and Banks will be on the motion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. Final item I have is a request to modify the 2021 road plan. We'd like to add Loring Road, Rocky Hill Road, and we've since added one more Livingston Vernon Road. So we asked to modify the road plan to include those three roads.
Move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll have our very able attorney. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mike, Mike.
Item 47 involves two actions. The first is acknowledgement of a, uh, Chancery Court Order that we received March 29th involving 13 parcels of land, um, where the judge confirmed title of the land in the county and this land is known as landspan. And, uh, the board is very well aware of this issue. Uh, we received, uh, the parcels from the Mississippi Secretary of State's Office 2011. It was involved in the Parkway East pit lawsuit that we won on appeal to the Fifth Circuit. So the county owned the land, so, but before we deed it back to the Parkway East pit, we had to confirm title. So previous board, uh, undertook steps to confirm the title. It took a while to do it and we received the title order confirming title to the county March 29th. So you need to acknowledge receipt of the court order confirming the county's interest in the landspan property before we can deed it.
Can we get a motion?
Motion.
Is that second?
Is that?
All in favor?
Aye.
And the, um, next action is a quick claim deed, uh, allowing our President Banks to sign a quick claim deed to the Parkway East pit. And the board realizes that, um, we won the property, well, we never lost it, but it was confirmed recently as a result of the lawsuit. And, uh, in your generosity, you agree that since the county cannot, um, pay taxes, we would have helped out the Parkway East pit by ceding the property to them to allow them to put the land on the tax rolls. So hopefully they could sell it and help to pay back the bond. So the quick claim deed is here and we need a motion to allow President Banks to sign the quick claim deed.
Can we get a motion? Is that second?
Second.
Okay.
And that is the end of the county's official involvement in the Parkway East matters.
Okay, now that takes us out of it completely, right? Okay, good.
I didn't feel that vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All is have it by unanimous vote.
Unanimous.
Okay, uh, Shelton Vance, our county administrator, has some things.
Yes, sir, if you could, uh, direct your attention to item number 48. It's identified as the raise grant. You, uh, there's a new grant that was previously known as the bill grant. Now it's known as the raise grant. This request before you is for permission for the board president to sign a letter to the Central Mississippi Commissioner of the Mississippi Transportation Commission for support in this grant.
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Motion is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The next item, uh, submitted, uh, late last week is for approval of incentive cards at Starbucks and Walmart for the juvenile drug court.
Motion.
Is that second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and that's it. But while the comptroller's walking in, I'm going to talk slowly, uh, because I want to remind everyone that this is the last board meeting before the payroll frequency flips to every two weeks for everyone. So by the time we get to the next board meeting, we will be on an every-two-week frequency for payroll.
It doesn't flip for me, does it?
Sir?
It flips for me also?
I, I, I understood that it flipped for everybody. So there's been a calculation done to put yours on, uh, two weeks.
And if I get mine on two weeks, that'll be $4 every two weeks? Boy.
And I think the payroll, payroll raise bill for the supervisors did not pass in the legislature.
Not at all. I, I can attest to that.
You can attest to that.
Hadn't had one of those the past ten years. Next will be, um, I think White, uh, comptroller coming through the door.
Shelton, if you would, uh.
Must I be watching the screen?
Send out an email again to every, every employee.
Uh, well, I was waiting for Hassan to come in. Uh, she sent out an email. She sent out an email, uh, this afternoon to all the department heads and elected officials to remind them, uh, of the issue, but we will get an email out to everybody.
Thank you.
Good, good.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The first item I have for you is number 50, which is the approval of the budget amendments and the interfind cash transfers.
Make a motion for approval.
Is that second?
Second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
The next items is 51 through 54, which consists of the general claim socket and three payroll dockets for April 5th, April 13th, and April 14th.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Item number 55 is the approval of the planning and zoning commissions per diem.
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. One going, one back.